Okay, Charles, I see it's opening. Yeah, nothing was happening, so I wanted to make sure I didn't make a mistake. Well, Nancy is on this. Yeah, I just, it just came on now. Okay. Okay, very good. All right, I'm with you. Bye.
Hey Judy, hi Franz.
Hello Wayne.
Hi Wayne.
Hi Franz.
Hey Judy.
Right. I was gonna say Nancy, you've changed, and not for the better.
I believe she's still out.
She, I think so too.
How's everyone doing these days?
Doing well enough.
Thank God.
Judy, I sent an email over to you a few days ago. I don't know if you got it. If you didn't get anything from me, let me know. I'll resend it.
What?
Good evening.
Wayne, which email did you send it to?
Probably your city one.
Okay. I'll check right now.
Good evening Bill, good evening Sonia.
Hi Bill, hi Sonia.
How are you?
I know we got some feedback going on. Or some background stuff. Wayne, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So, we have all the blocking and tackling for the meeting? Pledge allegiance and all that?
Yeah, you want me to do it?
I'll go do it, I mean.
I see, it comes up as Nancy, but is it actually Asher?
Yeah, I believe that's what, I believe that's who's using it.
Hi Asher.
So, I think we just pledge allegiance and attendance, who's there, and then we could go into it.
Yeah, I'll, Charles, if I may, I'll just read the Public Meetings Act statement too.
Yep.
When you just call the meeting to order and then.
Yeah. Cause it said 6:02, I don't know how many, let me see. Okay, Stan, Stan is here. That's the most important person. Okay.
I can start whenever you want, Council President.
Huh?
I can read the Old Public Meetings Act statement whenever you're ready.
I guess what we'll do is to formally, I'll open the meeting up, and then you'll read the Pub, the Public Meeting Act.
Yep.
I'll ask everybody, you know, rise and, okay, let's, let's, let's get started. I know that there'll be some people, Councilman Rosenzweig won't be attending, he's got another event he's attending, and I'm sure there are other people who are attending that same event. But anyway, we have to have this. So, I call this council meeting for the Russell C. Major Liberty School RFP to order at 6:03 on October the 6th, 2021, to order. Will everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, I will have the city solicitor read the Open Public Meeting Act.
Yes sir, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6@SEC, in the local finance notice 2020-21, establishing standard protocols, this meeting will be held telephonically and virtually via Zoom. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so by calling or clicking on the link that is listed on the published agenda, which is also on the city's website at City of Englewood, meeting@cityofenglewood.org. Individuals will be able to fully participate in the meeting, including providing public comment. Public comments may be submitted by 3pm on the day of the meeting, either through written letter or email to meeting@cityofenglewood.org. All written comments should be read during the public forum portion of the meeting, and shall be subject to the same time limitations for public speaking. Duplicative comments shall be noted for the record and summarized. The agenda can be found on the city's website at www.cityofenglewood.org. The council, although it's not anticipated, the council reserves the right to discuss and act upon such business as may be brought up for consideration, to the extent that consideration of such public business is not known at this time, although is not anticipated, formal action may or may not be taken. The proper notice having been given, the municipal clerk is direct to include this statement in the meeting of minutes.
Well, the city solicitor just, will do an attendance for the folks here, and then we'll get on with our business for this evening.
Okay, Council President Cobb?
Yeah.
Councilman Hamer?
Here.
Councilwoman Marin?
Here.
Also present is City Engineer Franz Balsey, City Planner Stan Slahetka, City Manager Sonia Alvez Viveras, and assisting us tonight is Asher Forst, in the absence of the city clerk. Just for the record, at this point in time, Mayor Wildes, Councilman Cohen, and Councilman Rosenzweig have not appeared yet at the meeting.
And just to add, Councilman Rosenzweig contacted me earlier saying he will be, he will not be attending tonight's meeting because of a, another commitment, and if the commitment gets done early enough, he will attend, but right now, I don't expect him to be here. And I have not heard from the mayor or Councilman Cohen, for the record. Tonight's meeting is the third meeting to discuss the Russell C. Major Liberty School redevelopment project for the RFP purposes. We have Stan Slahetka here, who is going to go through the document once again, just addressing any updates or changes to the document. That's what this, that's the purpose of this meeting tonight, and to answer any questions from the public, which they may have, as we move forward with the commitment of putting an RFP out to the public. So with that, Stan, I will hand over the mic to you, and you can go through the pages and just give us an update on any revisions that you have, and we will open the floor to the public for any questions they may have.
Thank you, thank you Councilman Cobb, and in a moment, I'll ask Nancy to give me control, so this way I can, I can put the, the RFP draft document on the screen, and then give an opportunity to kind of give the public a walkthrough on some of the key parts of the document. But, but as you indicated, this is the third public meeting that we've had on the draft RFP. We had one on June 21st, and then there were some subsequent revisions that we made to the, to the draft RFP document to incorporate comments from the public, as well as from the council members, as to revisions that were requested. And we had a second public meeting on July 29th, in which we outlined and reviewed the various changes that were made to the draft based on those comments, then gave an opportunity again for the public to, to provide input and comment. There were not quite as many specific revisions that were made, and I think part of that was because of the fact that as, as part of our first iteration and review of the draft document, we had the opportunity to get a lot of, you know, public input and respond to that, and it seemed that most of the changes and revisions were generally acceptable to the public. However, we understand that there may be some, some members of the public that, that didn't get an opportunity to participate in the first two public meetings on the RFP, and will obviously go over some of the, some of the key aspects of the, of the RFP, and what the purpose of the RFP document is in the context of, of the future potential redevelopment of the Russell C. Major Liberties, Liberty School. So give everybody an opportunity and a context to understand that. But having said that, I did want to just identify that, the, the two changes that have occurred in the, in the draft document, and I'll, I'll, I'll be, when I walk through the document, I'll highlight these, but I, right up front, I just wanted to indicate that, what those changes were. And then, like I said, we'll, we'll go through that as, as we discuss the rest of the document. But the first one is on page one in section 1.1 of the document. We corrected the amount that the city had spent on the acquisition of the Russell C. Major Liberty School, and that was revised. The original draft had $11.5 million, but that included both the Liberty and School and Lincoln School in that amount. So, we were provided documentation by the, the city, and the contract that specifically identified the amounts for, or itemized the amounts for both the Liberty School and Lincoln School. And so, the amount on that page, on page one, was revised from $11.5 million to $6 million, which is reflected in the September 30th, 2003 contract of sale between the Board of Education and the City of Englewood. So that was really a technical correction. The second revision was that language has been added to section 4.1 on page 14 of the draft RFP, specifying that all respondents are required to demonstrate full compliance with all federal, state, and local laws relating to affirmative action and equal opportunity. That language that we've added, and we'll show the specific language in just a moment, that was provided to us by, by, by Bill Bailey, the city attorney, so we followed his, his language. And those were the only two changes from the draft that was presented at the July 29th meeting. So if anybody has had the, had had the opportunity to review that draft, these are the only two changes that were made. Everything else that's presented in the draft remains, the, remains the same as, as what was presented on July 29th. I should point out, as I did at the last meeting, that the, there are various dates listed in the, in the section describing the checklist. The section 1.5, which is the, the schedule, and section 3.2 is listed as TBD or to be determined, and obviously, all those dates will be placed in the document based on the, on the issuance date. So obviously, we don't have that yet, but everything will be marked from the, the issue, issuance date appropriately. So you'll see, still see some dates that say TBD. We also, in section 1.5, at the very beginning of that section, that we'll be adding the date of this public meeting. We have the dates listed for the two public meetings, but obviously, once this is concluded, we'll, we'll add the, the third date, and so when the RFP is issued, that the respondents will be able to see that there were three public meetings already actually on the RFP document. And as we'll note, in the, there will also be public meetings that will be required to public meetings as part of the review process, to review the responses to the RFP. So those were the, those were the two specific changes that were made in the document. Everything else is as it was presented on the meeting of July 29th.
So Stan, I have one question, sorry for interrupting you.
No, that's quite right.
I, because you, you make a, an important point. Could you just repeat, because this is being recorded, I just want to make sure that people understand that we had two previous meetings, and repeat the dates on those meetings, because what I'd like to do is present a timeline for folks, so they see the progression of this project, and we, we're gonna have to add a couple more dates for two public hearings as well. So I just want to make sure and, and see how consistent we've been in trying to deliver the next steps for this project.
Yes, the, the first public meeting was held on June 21st, 2021, and the second meeting was held on July 29th, 2021, and my understanding is both of those, those meetings were advertised appropriately as, as, as public meetings, and they were, they were both virtual meetings and presented as such. I do want to point out too, that even, that prior to the first of the two public meetings, we, we also had two working sessions with the council to get and gain their input on some of the initial drafts. So the draft that was presented to the, to the public, starting on June 21st, incorporated a number of comments, revisions, and changes that were reflective of, of inputs from the, from the council. However, all those changes were, had already been incorporated by the, in the June 29th, June 21st draft, and those were all presented as part of a complete document, RFP document to the public on, on, on June 21st. So this is the third opportunity for the public to provide input on the draft RFP document before it's released and issued for respondents to respond to.
Thank you.
And so let me just, if I can get control, so I can, I can show you.
Yeah, I've enabled the share screen.
Okay, should I, can I share a screen now? Let's see. Ah, I guess I can. Good. All right. Share. I keep on remembering, have to remember that there, each application has so many different buttons to, to follow for sharing. So can everybody see the, the, the screen that I'm sharing that shows the Russell C. Major Liberty School redevelopment RFP document?
Yes.
So, and actually, one of the key changes coming out of the, the first meeting was to make sure that all references to the, to the site and to the building is to the Russell C. Major Liberty School. So that, that was one of the key changes coming out of the first meeting. So I'm gonna go, and then we have the list of the, obviously, the list of the credits. I'm gonna go to the, the table of contents, and as I said, I know that there may be some people here that have been participated in either one or both of the previous meetings, but there may be some, some individuals that did not participate. Right from the very beginning, I want to make sure that everybody understands that what this is, this is not a redevelopment plan for the, for the Russell C. Major Liberty School site. Rather, it is a request or proposals for respondents, that could include public, private, nonprofit, or any kind of variety of team that might decide of entities that have an idea and a perspective and an approach for the future development, redevelopment, and preservation of the Russell C. Major Liberty School site. And so, one of the important aspects of this to understand is, is this is not a plan, but it is a request for, and an opportunity for the city to review a variety of different responses and make its best judgment as to what would be the most appropriate form of development or redevelopment or preservation, or some combination of the Russell C. Major Liberty site and the buildings that are located thereon. So, having said that, the, the RFP document, the draft, follows a format and structure which is relatively consistent with what developers and redevelopers, nonprofits, and public entities will, the, will see when they are looking at an RFP document. It's divided into three, into, into four main sections. The first provides some introduction and general information for the response. That includes the process and information about the process and schedule for, under which the responses to the RFP will be, will be considered. And right up front, it identifies some various key rights and, and responsibilities, not only their successful respondent, but also the rights of the City of Englewood under the terms of the, and any potential agreement that is, that has reached for success, with a successful respondent. The second section focuses on some important background information with regards to the Russell C. Major Liberty School site and building, including information about prior studies and, and evaluations of the, the building and the site that has, has previously been undertaken, including the prior redevelopment area designation of the site, because the site is in fact in a, has been designated as an area need a redevelopment under the local redevelopment and housing law, and we can get into more details about that. Then there's very specific instructions for preparing and, and submitting a response to the city as part of the RFP process, and that gets into some, I'm not gonna go into all the details, but, but it gets into some, some specifics as to what's expected with regards to the response. And then, probably most important, in section four, is a review of, and a outline of the evaluation criteria. What is the importance that the, what is the city going to consider, and what are going to be important considerations by the city in reviewing responses? And the two or three things that are, that are very important and underlying the overall approach to the RFP. First of which, the city is, and has been expressed by the, the desire of the council, is casting a relatively wide net in terms of the kinds of responses that it's going to receive. Not only the, the, you know, there's no exclusions in terms of proposals that the, the city might consider, and also no exclusions in terms of the type of team that the city might consider in evaluating responses. That could be, that could, that, that could include, as I mentioned, a private entity. It could include a public entity, a nonprofit, or some combination of, of different teams that might have an idea about, and, and, and want the, the city to consider a proposal for, for the use, the future use of the, of the Russell C. Major Liberty School site. Two, having said that, there are two important things that have been identified as preferences, and in the, and then, and these are identified and spelled out at numerous locations within the RFP document. First of, we, the first of which, a preference, a very expressed preference is, is given for proposals that include a community center. They, they, and, and second, another important preference is to proposals that preserve and, and sustain the historic characteristics of the Russell C. Major Liberty School site and, and building. And that's, both of those preferences are expressed in the document at various locations. So those are the four main components of the RFP document. As I mentioned, there's, there is a checklist that will help respondents kind of organize and, and, and understand the schedule. There's a glossary that provides some definitions and terminology. We, we have made some revisions to this that, that have been asked either in response to the community input and responses of community, and input from the, from the council members. As I mentioned, there's the introduction. We did, as I mentioned, correct the, this initial sentence, so that we correctly identified that the, the initial purchase price from the Board of Education was $6 million. There's a mention of the redevelopment area designation. We do, there's a very important, and we put this upfront, discussion of the community engagement and participation to date in the process of determining the future use of the Russell C. Major Liberty School. And that goes back to the process of the master plan, developing the master plan. That goes all the way through the development and preparation of this request for proposal. We mentioned the envisioned redevelopment, as I indicated, the idea is that we're looking for a, we're not, we're casting a relatively broad net, but we do have very, very specific preferences here. It's noted that the, with regard to the future land use of the Russell C. Major Liberty School site, please note that while the City of Englewood is open to suggestions of qualified redevelopers, it will view favorably proposals that include a community center. City of Englewood would also view favorably proposals that maintain the historical character of the Russell C. Major Liberty School building. So that's expressed upfront, and also, it's expressed when you review the, in section four, the review criteria, that's also expressed as well. It discusses the, there, there's also a variety of documents that are, that are listed in the appendices that are going to be provided through links that provide further background and information, including some of the environmental studies, preliminary environmental studies that was done, the, the, the assessment of the building, the redevelopment study, and some information from the Englewood Historical Society with regards to the historical characteristics of the document, of the building for reference by the, by the respondents. As I mentioned, this discusses the, the process, the schedule, as I mentioned, the dates in the schedule need to be added in, once we have a starting date from the issuance of the RFP. We have various, and again, I won't go through the technical details, that what are the responsibilities of the successful respondent? Part of that is to Part of that is to pay fees of the the city of Englewood's professionals in review of the of their their proposals. There is a a requirement for fees that get paid, and that was increased based on inputs from the from the community meetings and from the from the council. And there is up so there are upfront fees for responding to pay for the initial review of the responses. And then ultimately, there'll be escrow fees that will be required of the successful respondent as as it goes further through the process. In section two, as I mentioned, gives the background. And again, some of the some of the concepts of how we view the this in the city specifically reviews the Russell C. Major Liberty School site is is outlined here. We've been again, further background, required local approvals. Anything that gets any successful respondent will require be required to go through all the necessary approvals, including presentations and and applications before the 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 city's planning board as as appropriate. So there the the successful respondent not only enters into a contract and agreement with the city, but they will be required to follow the appropriate processes, both under the redevelopment law and the municipal land use law. And there's also other approvals that would be required. So again, we describe in section three, what is required of the respondents in in preparing the application. The form and content, three point nine, the form and content of the response outlines a lot of information and how the 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 proposal will be organized. And that will help the city better prepare or better review all the various responses. So everybody has a fair shot at doing this, and everybody's providing consistent information in a manner that is easily reviewed and understood by the city, as well as the public reviewing these responses. So this lists the the responses. One of the things that we added, or actually two things that we added, one initially is a response to city's council's desire, is a fiscal impact analysis and a traffic impact study. That needs to be presented as part of the proposal so the city can understand the potential fiscal impacts and traffic impacts of of the of the proposal. We want a lot of information and background on the both the respondent and the respondent team, if it's more than than one response, that they have a solid track record of doing similar types of projects. And that's an important part of the evaluation criteria as well. And then obviously, references are going to be in in important. Some basic adminis more administrative propriety information. This I won't get into all the details. So as I mentioned, section four is extremely important because it sets forth the valuation criteria, how the city is going to review the responses and make a determination as to what is in the best interest of the city and the and 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 the community. So that's listed here in four point one. As I mentioned, we do require fiscal impact analysis, a traffic study. Those are going to be parts of the evaluation, especially the fiscal impact is being is being an important evaluation criteria. And then, as we indicated, that the the responses can be from a variety of different entities. So we want to make sure that again, that those those entities, public, private, nonprofit, whatever, have the the track record and actually can deliver the kind of project that they're presenting as part of their as part of their proposal. And I think that would be it, as and we provide a couple of maps, just orientation more than anything else. And as I mentioned, we have a list of documents that we were going to be providing to the respondent, the the State Historic Preservation Office opinion letter on the historic characteristics of the of the 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 school, the adaptive reuse study that was prepared a few years ago, our redevelopment study that we prepared on behalf of the city and and the the resolution designating the area in need of redevelopment, the phase one environmental site assessment, and documents from the Englewood Historical Society, again, affirming and providing information in terms of the historic characteristics of the site. So that's the that's the RFP document. And obviously, I can answer any questions and we'll we'll be taking further comments on that.
Asher, this this part is usually when Yancy is reading the questions, Asher. If you have a way of getting them to me, or we can direct them right to Stan so he can see them, he can read them and then answer them would be helpful. The the one question that I have for Stan, and we may make need to consider this as a council is in light of what happened with Hurricane Ida, you know, what I saw some of the shortcomings in the city is one of them was a place to evacuate people to. You know, I don't know how we incorporate that into this project because it would probably have to depend on what type of project it is ultimately to see if it if it could be used as an evacuation site or something to that measure. But this may be something that we as a council may want to think about as well, or how we could kind of put that in there if we can. You know, it just gives us an option because it looks like we were short on space in in terms of that. And obviously, if it's a community center and it has those elements in there, we could use it as an evacuation site, you know. So I I just want to know, do we need to put language in there? Can we put it in there? Should it be advised or not? And, you know, maybe we have this conversation with the council.
Council president, I one thing also with some of the newer buildings is energy efficiencies. Is that something maybe the council would also want to entertain if we're talking about having a, let's say, a shelter in place, having that having that location as a shelter in place, but considering using green energy as well. Maybe Franz can speak a little more to that, but maybe a consideration for the council as well.
Yeah, I think any 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 new structure should should, you know, have those types of things in there. You know, more green efficiency, just the efficiencies. We should hold that standard across the city now, right? Because of climate change and all these other things, we should take advantage of those things to make these buildings as efficient as possible. So yes, I agree with you with that, and and that's probably something Stan, we probably need to, you know, provide guidance on for whomever is going to participate in the RFP process. That there will be a certain standard how this building will have to be built, maintained, and, you know, some of the things that has to meet the standards, the new standards today of a building and what we're looking for out of a building.
I have a I have a question, Charles. In line with what you're talking about, since everybody now that is discussing new structures, especially public structures, the question of relocating, for instance, all the mechanical systems on a higher level, you know, no longer using a basement for the the mechanical system in anticipation of a hundred year or two hundred year flood, whatever we might have. Should we have this also? Do we have to be that specific in our RFP? Or can we put in a blanket statement that would talk to adhering to all the convey, you know, the modern concepts related to energy efficiency?
You know what? I think Franz is on, but I believe that now they they put the mechanicals on the roof, if I'm not mistaken. But Franz could help, or or either Stan could probably speak to that as well.
No, but I'm just saying, excuse me, Charles. I I wherever they put them, I'm just saying, do we have to be this specific in the RFP? Or would we be covered, you know, with a blanket statement toward using all modern technology, you know, in relationship to environmental protection?
I I I that's what I'm saying. I think they could speak to that because there are certain standards right now, I believe.
Can I?
Yes.
Speak to that. But one of the benefits of the whole redevelopment process is it gives a government entity a lot of flexibility throughout that. So in other words, even if it's not in the RFP, once if the city gets a shortlist of proposals that they are interested in, unlike a traditional bid specification, you have the opportunity to sit down with them and say, no, we want the building to look like this. We want utilities on the roof. We want a certain amount of green space, you know, all that, which is it doesn't have to be as detailed at this stage because we don't really know yet. This is really just the starting point. But again, that's the nice thing with the redevelopment law is it gives government that flexibility to really dictate what they want to see there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. And and I just to add to that, too, what's what's important to note is that once a respondent is successful respondent is is selected by the city. You know, as as Bill says, there's a negotiation and there's a redeveloper agreement that needs to take place. That could be that could be incorporated into the redeveloper agreement. But remember that the next step after this process is once we have a a successful respondent, then there needs to be a redevelopment plan, a site-specific redevelopment plan adopted. And those kinds of provisions, in in including things like the the a design that is responsive to climate change and using green building designs, that can be incorporated into the redevelopment plan and be very we can be very specific there in in ensuring that whatever is done, whatever adaptive reuse or or use of the building is is designed in a manner that is sensitive to issues of climate change and environmental sensitivity.
Thank you. At this point, we we can open up Stan. I believe we're going to open the floor up. Actually, you'll just have to let them in. If they go into the chat or if they raise their hand, or actually, you can let them in and we'll have them identify themselves and Stan can answer their question.
I'm looking for anyone who's raising their hand, and I do not see any questions yet in the question and answer, please. We have a Sinetta Panton.
Is she in, Ash?
Uh, yes, she just came in. She comes. She disappeared for a moment.
It muted.
Hi, good evening. I'm sorry. Um, two quick questions. One, is this city obligating itself to choose from the proposals? So for example, if you get five proposals, are you obligating yourself to choose one of the five? That's my first question, or, you know, however many come in, you you must choose one of what has been submitted. And then the second question is, will proposals that maybe don't win, per se, will they be able to speak to the city about what were the the issues with the proposal?
Bill, the first question, you want to answer that one?
Sure, the this.
You you're on mute. You're on mute.
Sorry, hit the button by accident. The city has the flexibility to reject all proposals if they like. It it's, you know, actually, the city went through this process a number of years ago and just rejected all the proposals. Didn't like any of them, and so it has that right to do that. It can, there's no specific number. It's really which ones the city council thinks will best accomplish the city's, you know, goals, and it could be all of them, could be none of them, could be some of them. It could be, we like parts of it, your proposal, but not this part. But the city doesn't have an obligation either, though, to for anyone not considered to meet with them. The city could if it chooses to, but generally, they don't. They just, you know, try to shortlist the proposals that they think are have the best shot at accomplishing the goals and meet with them. It's not like a bid situation where if there's a defect, you know, you forget the the bidder forgets to submit the consent of surety form. That's different in that context. That's governed by the local public contracts law, which is very stringent. And you have to fi follow it pretty much, you know, dot all the i's and cross all the t's. But again, that's with the redevelopment process. The legislature acknowledged the need to give municipalities the ability to have some flexibility in negotiating and getting the best product for a site such as this, which is in need of redevelopment.
And Bill, just to to with regard to the second part, the second question, and and I totally agree with you that there you're not be obligated to select any, you're not satisfied with any anybody, or if there's only one response and you don't like it, you don't you're not respond, you're not obligated to to select that entity. But my understanding is that all the responses would be public information, correct? That everybody would have the opportunity to review that or not?
Not until after it's been decided. They remain confidential until a decision is made by the governing body. The reason being to allow municipalities to negotiate with the various proposers.
But there is a there is a requirement in the RFP document that there's going to be two public meetings on the shortlisted proposals so that in that the community and the public will have an opportunity to view and to respond and and provide comments on the the ones that make the the shortlist, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. So neither did I answer your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Asher, any anyone else up?
Questions and the question and answer location. If anyone would like to ask a question on the bottom of your screen, there's a little raised hand.
Do you need me to hand you back the 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 hosting?
No, no, it's just a screen sharing. I don't see anybody raising their hand, sir.
Does does anybody on the governing body that's attending this meeting, do they have any questions or comments that they'd like to put forth to the public?
Oh, nothing additional.
Well, yeah. So I believe Stan had mentioned earlier how the schedule will fall. We have to have two public meetings as well. And we also have to set a date when the RFP will be issued. I I will have that on the agenda for for items for discussion. I believe on this Tuesday, October twelfth, council meeting, so we can keep this moving forward.
Right.
Right? So I just want to make sure that the public has had an opportunity tonight to, if they have any comments, issues or concerns, to to voice them tonight. Before we close out this meeting, I want to, you know, if there's nobody there, Asher, please let me know. We'll we'll give them a minute if they want to still raise their hand. If not, we will look to move forward and adjourn this meeting.
As of right now, there are no further hands up and no questions were asked in the question and answer.
No questions were asked. Councilman Hamer, you have anything?
No, no, I do not.
Councilwoman Marion, you have anything?
No, just that I'm I'm looking forward to some really interesting proposals and to moving this forward, Joel. Thank you.
I I agree. Mr. Bailey, you have any words of advice or anything?
No, no, you just need to close the public portion, and if we're done, I'll motion to adjourn.
Okay, I just want to make sure Mr. Volsi is still here. Mr. Volsi, you have anything from the engineering perspective?
No, no, I think this was there's more than enough opportunity for the comments, et cetera. I think the council did an excellent job and bring this up to the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
The one person just wrote a question in. Would you like that?
Can you can you read it or can Stan see it? Stan, can you see it? Which is easier for Stan to see it and read it and or you, Asher?
So gentleman Steve B. says, I have a question to the council's knowledge. How many proposals are the council? How many proposals are the council aware of so far?
There's, there's none because the RFP hasn't gone out yet.
Right, so, right. We haven't gotten any. We've, all we've heard is people saying they're interested or they want to, they may, or they may not, or whatever, but we haven't gotten any yet, so there's, it's not fair to say there's a number.
And someone would like to know if they can ask an off-topic question in this forum?
If it, if it doesn't have to do with the Russell C. Major Liberty School, if it doesn't, this is what this forum is dedicated for. Anything else, we, we, we will, we'll have a council meeting on Tuesday where they have all the opportunity to speak about any other topics that are going on.
Okay, thank you.
Or if they want to contact the individuals, myself or any of the rest of the governing body, please do so if it's a pressing issue or Mr. Bailey or something like that. But this, this meeting was dedicated for specifically this for them. So if they want to take something offline, please feel free to contact any of us offline. The city manager, Sean, do you have anything that you would like that?
Um, I do not have anything at the moment, but just so the public is aware, all of this is on the city website, including all of the draft and any Q and A's. So we'll make sure that we'll update whatever Q and A's were posted this evening. And we'll have that on there as a form of reference. And as you discussed and said, stated, Council President, we're providing a step-by-step of what we've done thus far as the city in terms of meetings and questions and answers and draft RFPs, all of that is on our website.
And we also have a section where you can ask questions. Did we put that up? That, did we implement that, I believe?
We do. We have an, we have an email established as well.
Right, so we, we, we have something there for anybody else. And for the person who I wanted to go off topic, I apologize for not, not using this time to do that because we focused and we dedicated this time for this topic. But feel free to contact any of us by email or by phone to ask your question. And I'm sure everybody here is willing to answer whatever your concern, your issue, concern or your questions.
Someone would like to know if the Tuesday meeting will be via Zoom?
Tuesday meeting will be via Zoom. I guess, Mr. Bailey, our meetings will be via Zoom until the governor says otherwise, right?
Well, it's actually, public entities can go back to live meetings. Some have, a lot of them did one or two, and then once the D variant started kicking up again, they went back to Zoom meetings. So it's ultimately up to the individual government entity. But by and large, they're still all virtual, like, for example, I haven't been to court almost two years.
Right. But, but I would also say, even if we did that, they, they would limit the number of people in the, in the room as well, right?
Yeah, you have to have certain.
Right, so we would, we would, we, we would limit the number. So in fairness to everybody, we'll just keep it at Zoom so we don't have to tell somebody they can't come into the meeting. We don't, we don't want to start.
The one, the one town I know of that does it live, maybe one person comes to their meetings.
Yeah.
Which is very doable in that situation.
Someone else's last time is seven thirty? I'm sorry.
Yeah, seven, seven thirty Tuesday. Yes, council.
Perhaps we can add that to the agenda, not necessarily, well, it could be discussed, but at least update the public and make sure everyone's aware of what's going on.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. I think the meeting will be called the Council Workshop Update Meeting because I think there's a lot of updates that have to take place at this meeting here. So this will be one of them, and that's a fair question by whoever, whoever asked that, you know, that's a good question.
Uh, Council President, just one, one clarification and confirmation. It's my understanding, based on the discussion this evening, that there are not any further editorial changes being made to the RFP document other than the fact that we'll be adding the dates once the council makes a decision on the issuance and then the, the subsequent dates for the process, including the community, the community meetings moving forward.
I, I, I would say so. I, I don't want to speak for the council as a whole, but I would say so, since the public has not added or had any questions or anything to add, or wanted to add anything tonight and needed the council outside of what you talked about, Stan. I believe it's pretty much set right now. But, but again, you know, we will have that discussion. I'm going to put this on for discussion as well at the council meeting, just as an update. We had a meeting, here's where we're standing, and this, these, and talk about potential next steps for that so that the public will be aware of what's going on for those who did not attend. I mean, obviously, this is being recorded, but, you know, maybe somebody has a questionnaire that night on Tuesday. So we, we will address their question in that form.
I, I certainly will wait further direction from the, from the council.
Sure, sure, no problem. You, you will know from us by, by Wednesday morning, the thirteenth or something like that, to, to move forward on what you need to do, but prepare to move forward, I would say that. Asher, anybody else there?
No, sir, no questions and no hands raised.
Okay, well, let's close this portion of the public meeting. Mr. Bailey, and we'll move to adjourn this meeting.
Move to adjourn?
Good night, everybody.
Stan, thank you so much, Mr. Bailey.
Yeah, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. All right, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you so much. All right, bye.